March 23rd.
All right, it is March 23rd, it is 9:02, and we will call the special meeting of Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. Danny?
Keisha Johnner?
Here.
Mark Ramey?
Here.
Steve McCombs?
Here.
Very good. Our agenda, as we have had in prior special meetings, is continued county response to the COVID-19 crisis. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Ramey?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
Very good, thank you. All right, in the open session right now, what I want to do is just talk about a brief kind of liturgy of what I'd like to talk to the managers about, and then after we do that, we'll go into closed session and have essentially a working group meeting. In the closed session, it will really be, I think, all of the people in this room along with Michaela will be in the closed session today. But for now, first item, we need to talk about critical functions, and we need to task our managers to go through their accounts and get critical accounts. So it even goes down to a chart of accounts as to what we deem critical services and what we deem not critical services. As you know, when we talk to Michaela during the closed session, we are going to go through our cash flow analysis. Given the governor's delay or exemption, not exemption, but I would call it a grace period to pay property taxes, there is confusion right now in the public. Some people are calling Michaela, in fact, a lot, saying they now don't have to pay their property tax. So what I am anticipating is a cash flow problem that we're going to have to be mindful of, people that it's not, you don't pay your property taxes, you've just been delayed. So Michaela will also be speaking during the press conference today to give people an update on that and the governor's policy, so give people specific information. But in that meantime, we have to go through our accounts, our staffing, and have to make determinations on what's critical and what isn't. That's going to be different for different departments, but we're at that point where we need to prepare. If this gets better in a few weeks' time, we've done an exercise that we'll plan for the next pandemic, but if it doesn't get better, we'll be able to be ready to start to shut things down, delay purchases. You think about roads and rock and those things, we'll have to make decisions about that if we don't have cash to pay, or we go on some kind of extreme credit line, which I don't know that I'm prepared to do. Remember, our flexibility right now in our accounts as a county government, we don't yet have the ability to reach into other funds, so it's only general fund right now that we have available. So we can't borrow from a statutory perspective out of those other funds unless there is some kind of order from the governor waiving all those restrictions. We do not have that order yet. That may be something we end up pushing. In the era of exceptions, delays, and forgiveness, we might ask for the same thing. Of course, that will impact other services that we do. Imagine being able to borrow from mental health, Kim, and saying, now, we don't have to allocate money to the cross-region, we can keep that million dollars for us. That changes things, right? Okay. And I sent an email last night saying just that, that we need to be prepared for those types of things. So anyway, that's the stuff we have to talk about with the managers. After that, we'll dismiss the managers, I think, and oh, and Keisha will be in charge of that effort to do that. She and I talked last night to get a handle on all of that, and then we'll go into a discussion with Michaela specifically on cash flow and other working item issues. Sound like a plan? Any questions right now? Any material updates, public health emergency management we need to talk about in open session? Nothing? Okay. Ed, anything from a courthouse perspective we need to talk about right now?
We don't have to transfer anyone to Texas. We have an individual in our jail right now who needs to be extradited to Texas. They will come and get him, they're required to come and get him. It may be, they will take their maximum amount of time to get here is my guess, but he on Saturday morning waived extradition to Texas.
Okay.
So it does mean that we are potentially going to have people from out of state entering our jail to get an inmate.
Justin, are we ready from a safety and protocol perspective to do that transfer without endangering our deputies or jail staff?
Yeah, logistically, we can do it, and then they, with them technically not even entering the jail.
Okay.
They will have to enter the Sally Port and the hallway, but...
Okay, good, good, excellent. And another little side note, we did have a break-in at East yesterday. It was recorded. The people, the two girls who did it have been, were apprehended within 25 minutes by Knoxville PD, so that was, just for full disclosure, we did have that. Nothing was taken, nothing was vandalized. These are people that have been dinging at the doors of East for the last three weeks, so...
Well, yeah, there was some vandalism.
What'd they do?
They knocked the front window out of one of the doors and...
Oh, yeah, but they didn't take anything from inside?
Nothing vandalized interior.
Right, okay. So we will be thinking about that and...
Were they youth or adults?
Youth.
Youth. I don't know their age, you probably have to talk to Knoxville PD. I'm guessing they're around 15, 16.
So something, Ed, if you want to follow up on that, see what that is, but I don't know, it's not super high priority. We got them, I think they're going to be, whatever that process is that they'll go through.
Right now, Paige is home, so we're down a cleaning person.
That's right.
So I'm saying as part of their, part of their learning process, maybe they could come and vacuum, but I know that, I know that'd be through the process, it had to be a legal process, and it probably ain't worth the effort, but my point being is, they need some kind of consequence for their action. I don't want to see them, I don't want them dinging hard on us, they're kids.
Right.
They still need to be responsible.
They'll go to juvenile court services as a referral, and quite honestly, what you guys will learn is what most of the public learns, which is
I know.
About 950 out of 1,000 things don't ever get brought to my attention.
Okay, all right. Well, I wanted to make everybody aware of that, just so we had that on our radar, but all right. Anything else for open? Steve?
Well, other than the county attorney office and IT will be moving today.
Okay.
The assessor tomorrow.
No.
Treasurer.
Treasurer, excuse me, treasurer tomorrow.
That's all right.
Yeah, so everything is moving along, we're kind of keeping up.
Or did you want HERDA in this discussion?
I suppose we can talk about that.
I say that as a reminder, had any question?
Yes, thank you for that, Jeff. Yeah, so Steve, where are we with HERDA? We can do that in open, we can talk about that right now.
Well, other than, other than what I sent the material to Jeff, that's where we're at. I really don't know. Financially, they're in dire straits.
Can we, I don't know, now this, maybe you can do this, Steve, or somebody that you can delegate this to, can somebody call their operations office, isn't that like in Story County or something like that?
No, it's in Urbendale.
Urbendale, and see what they're doing as a response to this, and are they going to be able to function long-term, or do we need to start thinking about alternatives? Because we've got, as Jeff and I talked about yesterday, we've got folks on dialysis who are going to rely on HERDA, and if they are not able to get rides, we got to figure out an alternative.
Well, I think we need to figure out an alternative. Just knowing what I know, we've had these discussions that are, probably won't have any more meetings for a while because of this COVID-19. You know, we've had this discussion a few months ago. There is a, there is a service out of Atoma, I can't remember their name off the top of my head, that could be an alternative to HERDA, but you know, we'd have to go through the legal process getting out of the 2080 agreements and all that.
Well, what did they say, Steve? Take a step back, because this is the first I'm hearing of this. What, if someone in Marion County right now calls HERDA, says, I need a ride, are the buses still, Kim, at your place? I mean, what?
I haven't been out there.
I can tell you right now, they're running on a shoestring budget, and there's diminished services. When Medicaid, when Medicaid was privatized...
I bet Stacy knows.
It took a huge hit to these transportation agencies.
Okay, so let's do this. I think Stacy will be our person that'll kind of have a pretty in-depth look at this. So when we have her in here, we'll talk about HERDA specifically, and rides, and that type of stuff. So that'll be a topic we do have. Okay, and then we'll work on alternatives. We need to, sound good? Anything else right now for open? Okay, with that, I think we can talk to the managers in open session. We'll go to closed when we do the other stuff, so they can go ahead and come in.
Who did you want in here?
We have two others.
Probably bring, probably bring Michaela, because she'll be here for closed anyway, so...
All right.
This won't be that long, I just wanted everybody to hear it.
This is kind of the cross-train, be prepared conversation?
Yep. Yep.
The hypothetical.
Come on in, Jay.
Hey, Jay.
Jay.
Come over here by me. I mean, you got your lucky green shoes on today.
That's right. Nothing can go wrong now.
Well, that looks good.
What's that? I've been looking at my hair since I can't get a haircut. Things are about to get really rough.
You know, I made a haircut appointment for tomorrow.
Yeah.
Right?
I have one this week.
And I told Lori, I said, you're out, look. Oh, what do, she said, well, I'm pretty good. I went, oh, gosh, I remember that when we were first married.
Well, I do Brian's, so if you need...
I can do, I can cut your hair.
I made a vow, Justin, because I had that haircut growing up, because my dad was out of the Navy. I made a vow, never, ever. Ever.
I can hear people laughing.
Hey, you better keep it while you still got it.
Are we set? Any other room?
Pardon my hair.
Lisa, would you make sure the doors are closed over there, please?
What's that?
Could you make sure the doors are closed over there, please, when everybody's in?
We don't have, we don't have all of our participants.
Okay.
I'm still... Still waiting on five.
Five?
Did it say 9:30?
Yeah, it said 9:30.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. Grab a cup of coffee, grab a cup of coffee, then make yourself comfortable. A little fluid, it's just like, you know, waiting for the White House to come on.
That's right.
Yeah. Don't say that really loud, someone's going to hate this. Actually, I wouldn't want that job right now to, my goodness.
All this, all the timing of everything just sucks.
Well, there's going to be people lying.
Well, you know, this move and everything, we've already had that, we already got that in motion, and now all this.
Right?
It's going down. Turn to go on. No, I turned it off.
He's going to be listening, but it's going to get some entertainment. Your daughter's signing up for online classes a little early?
Are you hearing everything?
Where, where are they?
Are you going to mute me at some point?
Probably not for a while.
Okay, come here a second.
Oh, wow, they're drinking it on the air. Unless it needs to be muted, but Mark gave me the look that well.
It's just not right.
I want to mute again.
Or it's really right.
Maybe that is, maybe that is true, counselor.
Wrong program.
I mean, you can change it.
Actually, Danny, that might...
I'm there for you.
I appreciate that.
Round windows, that they will not close through this crisis. Well, thank goodness.
Why stop there and talk to Deb? And she said, sales are for the roof.
I bet.
I said, no, no, did you get a box of Blantons? That's what I want to know.
And she said...
She said, I tried, I tried.
Steve, are you done in the gym?
Pardon me?
Are you done in the gym?
I think we're done, for construction-wise, anyway. They may have to put some doorknobs on, but it looks like the wiring guys have all those drops down. Probably a good thing we built that extra wall, because they hung all the drops off of that wall.
I saw that.
So I think we're done. I think, we're down, we're down a cleaning person now, so I don't know.
The one that promised me she was going to do this and this. Looks like all she's doing is this and this now.
She's just got, she just doesn't...
Shouldn't be too dirty. Pretty easy to sweep that floor.
I'm still in the courthouse this week for court, so... We just have a little bit on Wednesday for June. We have a mother who went into labor and said, ah, today's a good day to start using heroin.
I landed this morning and cleaned up our big mess in that South Court room, so it'll be a little easier for them. I didn't realize, they didn't realize she was going to be gone then.
So...
Yeah?
Just keep an eye on it.
Right, okay.
Lisa, are we still missing anybody?
Mark, I'm still missing Tiffany with mental health and Bill with GIS.
Yeah, we'll give them a couple minutes.
Okay.
We did say 9:30, I checked.
I can tell you I'm pushing 70, and I think I'm wearing these 40-year-olds out.
Surely not, right? My daughter got up to go to work at 6:00 AM this morning, and she's like, I said, how many hours are you getting this week? She says 25. I said, don't complain. There's people out there that would love to...
I don't want to be the one saying I got to keep going to work.
Right, yeah.
It wouldn't bother me one bit.
They're expecting 2.2 million new unemployment claims this week. A total, we, 6.9, higher than '08.
Where's Tiffany?
Mark?
Yeah. Yes?
Mark?
Yes?
Tiffany is here. Bill is having printing issues, and we'll be here as soon as you can.
All right, we'll go ahead and start. We'll get caught, we'll get caught up with Bill.
Hang on a second.
I know we got moving, so I don't want to keep people longer than we have to. All right, are we set?
We're set to go.
All right. Well, thank you all for coming over on such short notice. We are still in open session. Wanted to talk a little bit about operational impacts as a result of our COVID-19 crisis, specifically related to your departments. We have a little bit of extra work for people to do. We're going to have a discussion a little bit later on with Michaela about our finances as a county, but given what the governor's done with property taxes and those types of things, given the rate of infection, I think we need to be prepared in our departments to do several things, and I'm going to go through that. Number one, I think we need to have a cross-training plan in the departments, especially with multiple staff, in the event that either somebody gets ill or has somebody in their home get ill, has to be self-quarantine. So whatever those essential functions are, who can perform those in the event somebody has to be quarantined? And I'm going to walk through some data here in a minute, if you're not familiar with it, that is kind of the reason for this. Second, I need your departments to go through your chart of accounts. So the services that you purchase, what are your most important that we pay for? I'm going to task Michaela with doing a cash flow analysis for our county, and that will include the services that we pay for. We need to know those numbers and have a pretty good idea. Jake, I know Jake has all that and can be pulled together, but I'm asking you as department managers to do that, because I think you can get to it quickly. Third, key staff. If we get to a place where either from a cash flow perspective or an infection perspective, we have to do a temporary shutdown of certain areas or reduce services, what does that look like within your respective areas? Who are the key staff members you need? Now, obviously, for single-person departments, we get it. I'm talking about the large areas. I'm talking about areas with multiple staff. Road Department specifically, but also treasurer, auditor, recorder, county attorney, any place with multiple staff. Steve, conservation. So I want you to work through that. I would like to have a response to these items by tomorrow.
Want it all sent to you?
Actually, you can send that to Keisha and Michaela. Any questions on those three items?
No.
We're in a, we're in a new world. We need to prepare. It doesn't mean we're going to do anything. We hope the curve flattens. We're in day seven of the president's 15 days to slow the spread, so we have several days for our nation to do what we can to slow the spread, and if that curve begins to turn, that'll be good, positive news. It doesn't mean we're out of it, but it means that we've done what we need to do as a nation to start slowing the spread. With that, I want to show you some data, and you may be familiar with it, but I want to give you my interpretation of it. I worked with this stuff professionally for a number of years. I, Lisa, can you see the... I put it over there, so I'm sharing the screen with them. Okay, you guys can see the Johns Hopkins chart. I'm sure if you watch any news, this has been broadcast regularly. If you look down, it would be bottom right-hand corner, that's a logarithmic chart showing the rate of spread. So when you hear people talk about slowing the curve or flattening the curve, this is the curve they're looking at. And right now, I believe we're looking at the, this is global, right, Jeff?
Correct.
So what we want, go to China, Jeff, click on China. See the chart change? If you were to enlarge this chart and look at it, that's what we want to see. That's what Dr. Fauci, that's what the president, that's what the governor wants to see. Go to South Korea. A little bit, a little bit more resistance in that chart, but still, that's what we're looking for. So when you hear the words, slow the spread, flatten the curve, that's it right there, guys, in a nutshell. And you can look at this chart, it's also on several other sites, they're using very similar information. They all show the same thing. Now go to the US. Does that look flat?
No.
Right. So we are in day seven of 15 days to slow the spread, and this is what our leaders are looking at to determine what their next policy moves will be to do and effectuate that goal. So we, as county government, need to understand this. What I don't want you to do is run out of here, get on Twitter and Facebook, to all your friends, and go, oh, my God, the world's coming to an end. It's not. Okay? I want, I want you to be aware, because you're in leadership positions, every one of you in this room and in the adjoining room are in a leadership role. You influence one person, you're a leader. And you need to communicate this effectively to people around you. When they scoff at it, when they say it doesn't affect me, when they say it's no big deal, national policy is being made based on this information. And that national policy goes through the states and then comes down to us. So even if Iowa has, Kim, currently, what, 90?
90.
We have 90 cases in the state of Iowa. There'll probably be more updates today from IDPH on that. So even though we have only 90 cases, what we're being required to do nationally is driven by those numbers. So to a certain degree, it doesn't even matter what's going on in the state of Iowa, because what our leaders are looking at is, on a national basis, we've got supply issues. Where do the masks go? Where do PPEs go? Where do resources go to meet this challenge? That will impact us if we grow here in Iowa. And as you know, Illinois has already got a shelter in place quarter. So I'm, I'm telling you this so you can communicate effectively. Point number two, I do not want you running out of this room and saying that the Board of Supervisors is thinking about shutting down county government, because that's not accurate. We are making proper business interruption, risk management plans so that we can function in the event things worsen, and it is our responsibility to do that. A week ago, a little more than a week ago, we sent an email out to all employees talking about this, and we received resistance. We're going to be blunt, and now look where we are. So we need to take this seriously as county government, and we're going to take it seriously, because this is real, this is not an exercise. So our desire as a board is to prepare if things worsen. We can always lessen up if things improve. That's easy. The hard part is, what do we do in response to a worsening situation? And we need to do so in an orderly fashion that communicates confidence to our public, not chaos and confusion. Okay? I know you're all up to the challenge. Do you have any questions? Very good. Please get that information to Keisha and Michaela by close of business tomorrow, so we can start running some cash flow scenarios and other items, and we will definitely communicate to all of you of any changes. And we will definitely communicate to all of you of any changes. Thank you for coming. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commuted session. The actions of the board of supervisors continue to discuss the impacts of the COVID-19 crisis on Marion County. Is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye. Mark, you're adjourned. Thanks.